Are we ready now?
Yeah, I think we can go. You're good.
And everybody's here too. Okay. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started and I want to first of all, welcome everybody to our meeting this evening and thank you all for attending. And we're gonna get started because we do have a lot to cover and want to stop at 6:35 so that we can have some time for questions. And just a reminder, if you have questions, to use the link that was on the page where you logged in to send your questions and Mary Ann will get those and they will respond to those at the end. So I just want to take a moment to say something. I want to just thank all of the people who are working so hard behind the scenes to help the teachers, to be able to deliver this curriculum to the students. Having been a teacher, I know how hard it is to teach and we're trained to teach face to face in classrooms, you know, with all kinds of resources and manipulatives and things that that help us to teach our students. And so teachers have, you know, suddenly had to teach a different way. You know, to teach distance teaching and students have had to learn how to, they've had to adapt to learning with distance learning. And so it might look easy, but I know, you know, that there's a lot of work that goes behind the scenes with all the administrators. And I just wanted to say thank you because, you know, I know how hard you all are working, administrators, teachers, secretaries, especially the IT department. So I know sometimes like a parent is getting that, you know, they see it coming into their homes, but may not realize whatever, everything that goes into it. And also I want to thank the parents for also working so hard to help help their students because many of them are working jobs. You know, they might be out of the home or working from home and still having to help help their children learn. So appreciate all of that. Okay, so we're going to start with Dr. Phillips and Mr. Campbell talking about giving you update on the graduation. You know, what's happening with the seniors and graduation.
Okay. Mr. Campbell and myself spoke about a week, week and a half ago when we started to transition from what Dr. Winters is going to talk about tonight, which is Phase Two Instructional Plan into what has been discussed as Phase Three. And that is where do we go from here now that the governor has closed the the buildings for the end of the school year? One of those topics include graduation. So in a discussion with Mr. Campbell, and I want to thank some of the parents, they had given us some ideas that they had for graduation. And I'm going to let Mr. Campbell discuss the team he's putting together and how we're going to arrive at what event or if you want to call it what special process we're going to put in place to recognize our seniors. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you. Yeah, so today we met with the class advisors who are always involved with the planning of end of the year events, including graduation, prom, baccalaureate. And we focused our attention on graduation first. We know that there's other events that we'll need to consider along the way, but graduation is the most meaningful and significant one. And what we've done is really made a plan to reach out to our seniors. In fact, I sent the survey that Mr. Wasneski put together today out literally 15 minutes ago. And I'm watching even already some of the responses start to come in. So I'm pretty confident that our seniors will have ideas. And through that, we're going to review those on the 27th. So we're going to give the students about a week and a half to put anything down there that they want. And I'm hoping that parents also chime in through their students. We'll look at all those on the 27th to try to synthesize that into a few viable options and then put that back out to students to see what is their preferences. Our goal with all this is to maintain flexibility because we all know how quickly this situation has evolved in the last month and we are about seven weeks out from where graduation would be. So there's a lot can change in that time and we want to make sure that we have options ahead of us. But I think what we're seeing emerge already is some ideas regarding something physical, which would need to be like controlled along ideas of safety and some sort of parade or that kind of thing. Delaying it or some sort of something virtual. So those are the three categories that we see emerging. But one of the things that we're going to focus on with the students is that time and energy are going to be a factor in this. Money will be a factor in this as well as safety. So those are the three criteria that we're using as we put together our viable options for the students.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Anybody on the board or on the committee have any questions?
Hi, Tom. This is Dave Hamburger. Thanks for that overview. Will you be, I mean, as things kind of go on, will you be checking in with some of your your principal colleagues throughout the county and trying to see what they may be up to or are we sort of headed the game at this point right now?
Well, I think we're, we're all neck and neck right now for being uncertain about what the next step is. And we've been in pretty close contact throughout all of this on a variety of different topics. They've been a great resource. I think we've been good resources to each other to just come up with ideas. But in terms of graduation, I think what I just summarized is exactly where everyone else is in the county. And we were meeting, I think this Thursday or next. As a group, we always get together every month through the IU. So well, that is definitely one of the topics. We have a Google Doc going now that tracks that prom, a couple of other topics that we just want to have a pulse on what others are doing for ideas and to make sure that we're on track individually.
And I think what's going to be important is, and the superintendent's talk as well. I think the options and the ideas are going to be nice to share. But I think every district is going to be unique in its situation based on its makeup of its community.
That was very clear, just in the initial feedback that we got. I mean, Boyertown and Antietam are two very different situations.
I have a question. What about yearbook? Are, are the, is that, I know that they work on that all throughout the year, but is that going to be still happening?
Yes, the exact product in the end, I, I, I've not talked to Dr. Mr. White in probably a week or so. But he had some deadlines that he needed to hit toward the end of March that he was scrambling to. He, he's got a good cruise. There were a number of students that were really committed. And we figured out ways to get them to do some of that work from home. So I'm assuming that he met some of those, the deadlines that he had coming up. He's expressed that the printing companies are in a bit of flux right now. So that's uncertain about how that's going to get printed and distributed. And then even when it gets back to school, we'll need to come up with more specific plans about how we get those out to kids. We've, we've got a lot of other things that we'll have to talk through about how we distribute and collect from students and yearbook will be one of them. But there is a plan to have a yearbook in kids' hands. And I'm hoping that it's the same excellent quality that it, he always puts out.
All right, thank you.
Can I just add something about graduation? In just for, you know, the public saying that the reason that we're not kind of coming up with a hard decision so quickly is because things might change. And, you know, the possibility of being able to have something, you know, might change as we come closer to, you know, June or July or August. So, you know, I think people want to hear what our decision is, but I think it's better for us to wait and so we have, we know all of our options.
Well, and to your point, and I think Mr. Campbell has stated it as well as I think I stated that in my last message. We're in the planning stages at this point. There, there are, there are no decisions being made. To your point, we don't know what's going to happen. Things change drastically in days, weeks, months. We don't know if we're going to be opened for business. You know, I mean, it may happen June 1. We, that gives us a bit of a time to scramble and try to put something together. But we won't know until we know, as, I don't know how clear I could be on that. But yes, we do have an intention of doing something. We do certainly want the input of our students because, you know, the focus is on them. And we don't want to make a decision today that we're going to have to back up on tomorrow. So we're in the planning stages. We're going to have contingencies. We may have a multitude of decisions. If we're open by June 1, we'll do this. If we're open by July 1, we'll do this. If we're open by August and so forth. But yes, you're, you're 100% correct. We don't want to do something that we will have to back up on. When a decision changes, it's out of our hands. Anybody else? All right, there may be some questions that are sent to Mr. To Mrs. Gidney that we can answer at the end.
Okay, all right. So then we'll move on to Dr. Winters giving an update about the instruction phase two.
Thank you, Dr. McLendon. One of the things that I just really want to emphasize as I go through the plan is that again, my great appreciation for the collaborative effort that has been involved to get the instruction going. It's truly been a team approach between parents, community members, teachers, administrators, support staff, board members. And, you know, we've really shown in a positive way what that great Exeter spirit is all about. And I just can't thank folks in general enough for that. The slide presentation that I'm going to go through this evening is the same presentation that Dr. Phillips shared via Parent Link on April 5. And I've made some minor tweaks to update some information, but I thought it would be helpful for anybody in the community participating, watching this via the live stream to just, for me to just kind of go through, share some things with you and hopefully clarify some things and make sure we're all on the same page regarding to Phase Two. We launched our Phase Two e-Learning Plan on April 6. So we're in our second week under this plan. Our focus was really to provide opportunities for students so that they could continue learning and so that they could continue learning in a way that worked for them. Some of the words that we've used a lot as an administrative team through this process have been words like fluid, flexible, dynamic. And I think you'll see as we go through the plan this evening, it was really designed in such a way so that students could learn and families would be able to help them with their learning as needed at convenient times. So that was really the goal. We wanted to continue education so that students would have that through the end of the year at convenient times and inconvenient ways. Philosophically, as I said, we focused on flexibility. We're focusing on connections. I know many of you watching the live stream, you've been home with your children. And one of the things I hope you've seen is the way in which we've really tried as administrators, as teachers, as support staff, to connect with families and to connect with students to make sure that that support has been there. And wanting to also continue instruction with an appropriate amount of content coverage and rigor. And, you know, rigor is a word in education that we use a lot and we don't always clearly define it. And had we been in a traditional brick and mortar setting, we would be looking at 100% rigor in all of our courses. Recognizing where we are in the school year, some of the inherent challenges related to online learning. The guidance that we provided to our teachers is to look at the content and curriculum remaining by grade level or subject area and reduce the rigor by about 40%. And so that's what you're seeing in terms of what is being delivered instructionally at home. And then in terms of instruction, wanting students to be able to do it online using the platform of Schoology, which is something that our students in grades five to 12 are very well versed in. Our students in grades K to four, we recognize that there's been some learning of Schoology, but our teachers have really been great to step up as has our IT department to provide that support. On purpose, we started slowly since we had a couple of days just before the holiday break. Many of you may have seen on those two days, it was about getting online, learning how to be a successful online learner, et cetera. And then moving into this week with new instruction and continuing to be flexible. So to kind of take that and put it into a more succinct timeline for you. Dr. Phillips referenced Phase Three, which is the phase that is now kind of backing up into Phase Two as well. They're kind of merging together. But Phase One, we officially ended on April the 3rd. And the important thing to know about Phase One as a recap is from that March 13th to April 3rd time span, we were really just focusing on trying to make stuff available for students by way of engagement and enrichment. It wasn't graded. It wasn't new. Please understand that we were very purposeful in ending the third marking period on March 12th. We did that on purpose. That was the last day that our teachers and students were in the building together in the brick and mortar setting. So that was the end of our third marking period. April 6th, which was a week ago, Monday, we rolled out the Schoology platform for virtual learning for all of our students. New instruction really began today for all K-12 learners. And then this Friday is an important date as well. Any missing work, missing assignments that, you know, students still have not completed, they have until Friday of this week to submit those to be factored in for third marking period in determining that grade. We'll give teachers probably about a week to get grades finalized. And parents, you should look for report cards to go home. Probably in early May, we'll get those probably done digitally. We're still working out those details and we'll provide more information as we get a little bit closer to the time. So when you think about a student and what a student is doing and what their week at a glance looks like, it's important to break it down between K to four and five to 12. And the reason that that's so important is because education has to be developmentally appropriate at those different grade levels and students' needs look a little bit different at those different grade bands. So when we look at K to four, basically what we're looking at is at the K to two level or the primary level, you can expect 60 to 90 minutes of instructional activities focused on English Language Arts and/or math daily. And if you have a third grader or a fourth grader, more of that intermediate elementary level, it's 90 to 100 minutes. So we're looking at an hour to an hour and a half for primary, an hour and a half to two hours daily on those two core subject areas. You will see some science and social studies embedded in to that instruction, some disciplinary literacy, some reading in the content areas with those areas, as well as some opportunities for some hands-on science. You'll see some rotation of specials. All of our specialists have been great about offering and providing opportunities for students while home. So at the K to four level, you will see opportunities for your son or daughter to engage with art, music, PE, health, library and research. The, the same six special areas that they receive during the building. And then teachers being available regularly for families as support is needed. We really want to emphasize that we want to make sure that from a customer service perspective, that we are here to support students and to support families. Know that your teachers care very, very deeply about your success as learners and want to partner. And so please make sure as you need support that you're reaching out and engaging with them. At the grades five to 12 level.
Excuse me, Dr. Winters, can I ask you something about the availability of teachers? Is that, so the students or parents would just email the teacher at any time? Or do they have like, some schools I know have office hours or how's that working?
That's a really good question. So there, there are a couple of different ways that that could occur. Yes, email is certainly one possibility. Schoology, as the platform we use, has the capability to message, you know, for, for parents to message teachers or indirectly. So there's that possibility. I know we have some teachers that are doing Google Meet hangouts with their classes or with small groups of students. That's another way, but I know our teachers are on email consistently. We made a very strategic decision in the district to not set specific times of day as office hours for our teachers. And the reason that we did that was largely because we recognized that not every student and every family is going to need support at the same time of day. And we wanted to make sure that if our students and families needed support, that they could reach out when the support was there and that, you know, the teachers would get back to them in as timely a fashion as they could. So we're not structuring it such to where we're saying, for example, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. every day are office hours. We're leaving it more flexible and we're trusting that as families need support or as teachers recognize that students need support, that that communication is occurring and they're reaching out and they're finding agreeable times to communicate, whether that's via email, via Schoology, perhaps a phone call. Maybe it's, you know, using Google Meet, something along those lines. And then when we look at grades five to 12, things are a little bit different. At that level, students are a little bit older. The developmental appropriateness of the instructional needs that they have are a little bit different. And so in the grades five to 12 level, you're looking at three 20 to 40 minute instructional lessons or activities per class period per week. And then teachers being available again for families as support is needed. When you, you know, start getting into the five to 12 level, you have more individual subject areas. So like using high school, for example, you know, if, if, if a high school student has in their schedule, English, math, DZ Ed and Tech Ed, then they'll have assignments in all of those courses, you know, over the course of that week. So again, trying to keep it flexible and reasonable for our families and for our students, while also trying to make sure there's the flexibility for teachers to be able to help students and work with them as they go and progress. So in terms of expectations, just one thing to, and actually before I get into student expectations, let me actually take a pause and see if there's anybody on the curriculum committee that has specific questions about anything I may have explained so far or anyone that would like to add anything.
Patrick, this is Dave. I do have a question. In terms of the instruction, and we, I was just thinking more specifically of the elementary instruction. Is that being done, let's say contemporaneously, or is it recorded? Or is it interactive? Or, or is the instruction kind of provided and students follow along at different times of the day?
It's, it's a little bit of both and that's largely dependent upon grade level and teacher team. We have a lot of cross-grade level collaboration across teams right now. In some instances, there are teachers that are recording themselves, providing direct instruction, just them, you know, their voice and the content that gets uploaded onto Schoology that a student could watch with their parent at a time that makes sense. There are other teachers that are really leveraging Google Meet and Google Hangout and reaching out to their families and to students to say, I'm going to do a Google Meet on this particular day at this time. I encourage and welcome all students and even their parents as well to, you know, participate, you know, and, and, but it really is going to vary by grade level. And we have a lot of our grade level teams working together to make some decisions and determinations around what makes sense for that particular grade level.
Okay. And the other, the other question I had was, you know, the, the 60 to 120 minutes for elementary, is that daily, one to three Friday or are there a couple, is it three days a week with two days for communication with teachers? What's the, what's the format for elementary?
So in terms of instruction, kind of back up a slide here, that's, that's daily. So that, that's 60 to 90 minutes for K to two or that 90 to 120 minutes, that's, that's daily.
Five days a week.
You know, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a question. I don't know if you can address it later, but what, what, how are the needs of the special needs students? How, is that being addressed? I did have some questions from parents that had concerns about that. And then also, and are students being enriched who were previously being enriched?
So on some, on some slides further in the presentation, I'm going to talk about students with IEPs, students that are gifted, students that require Title I and ESL services. So when I get to those, I'll kind of pause. And if there are still questions, Dr. McLendon, that we need to tease out, I'll be happy to answer.
Right, that's fine. And I, that's why I was wondering if it's going to come later. So that's fine. Thank you.
Absolutely. Anybody else on Curriculum Committee with any questions thus far before I get into student expectations? Okay, when we talk about student expectations, again, we try, one of the themes I hope you'll see as we go through this this evening is that we, we've really tried to structure our Phase Two plan in the way that it's very simple and reasonable and flexible for students and families based on needs and based on where they are. And so when we looked at student expectations, we really tried to keep it focused on, you know, four key areas. Number one, connect with your Schoology account and if applicable, email, which is more five to 12 daily to look at updates, assignments, messages from the teacher, et cetera. So, you know, for parents that are, you know, listening from home and going through the live stream, one of the things that, that you can really continue to encourage your children to do and, and kind of help them do is every day when they get up in the morning and they start their education for the day, get into Schoology. See what's there. See if teachers have posted something new. That's a really good habit to get into. And then helping them complete the work that is provided, ask questions. Dr. McLendon touched on this previously, but it's really important that if students have questions that, you know, they, they feel comfortable asking those questions, whether it's through Schoology, through email, you know, when teachers are available. And, you know, for the, for the older students, I think encouraging them to advocate and send those emails themselves, I think is fantastic. I think for the younger children, especially in the primary grades and even three, four. As parents, helping them, you know, craft a message or sending a message on their behalf is, is really helpful. And then just understanding that our routine, now that planned instruction has begun, assignments are going to be posted on Monday and currently they're going to be due at the close of that week on Sunday. If we find that that's too much time between assignments, we may back that up and go Monday to Friday and leave weekend as a break. But we're going to kind of see how that goes after a couple of weeks in. But starting out, we wanted to allow the weekend again to offer flexibility for families. Something else that I just want to share with you, and I'll go back into present mode in a minute, but I want to show you something else that we provided for our students as kind of a really quick student expectation learning guide. And I need to give a lot of thanks to Mr. John White, who's an art teacher at our high school. He put this together in just a few hours in an evening. We were doing some training. We had some training coming up for our teachers. And one of our tech coaches, Missy Dow, reached out and said, hey, I would love to have something I can give our teachers that they can share with students on how to be a successful online learner. And Mr. White was kind enough to put this together and it just focuses on, again, that routine, finding a comfortable, quiet space where you can focus and get your work done, checking email every day, completing assignments with honesty and fairness, communicating regularly with teachers, making good decisions with technology. You know, support your classmates, work with them, understanding that it's great and okay to take breaks and go outside and be active. Speak with adults if you need help and that if you have a tech problem, make sure you're putting a ticket in. And I've got a slide about that as well. So this is a great little one-page tool for students. It's on all of the, it's on the Schoology, How to Be a Successful Online Learner page that students have access to. And I just wanted to share it with you because I think it's really well done. It's really helpful for students. And again, our appreciation to Mr. White for putting it together for us. So to get back into present. So in, in terms of student expectations, let me talk a little bit about attendance and accountability. And with attendance and accountability, in, in terms of attendance, again, right now, the way that we're going to handle that is it's going to be submitted by the teacher on Mondays. And for attendance, we're looking at basing that on progress and work completion for the prior week. So again, when you look at like, So, um, again, when you look at like, this is our week of new instruction. So teachers will submit attendance next Monday, April twentieth for this particular week. Okay? And so that's why this week is that, you know, first week of official attendance tracking. And a point that I will make that is very important is we really want, um, you know, we have asked our teachers, we have asked our administrators that if there are students that are not participating or not completing work, we're gonna be taking proactive steps on the building end to reach out to those students and see what we can do to help with that process. Are there barriers to learning? Are there technology challenges? What kinds of things may be contributing to that? Because we want students to be successful. I can share with you that, you know, after our first week thus far, we have high, high percentages of students well, well into the nineties that are logging on and accessing work on a day-to-day basis. And we are very confident that that will continue. And so, uh, but again, we are gonna focus on communicating and, um, really making sure that students are being reached out to if they're not logging in on a regular basis. And then in terms of accountability, um, school ag will become our primary location for communication, for finding assignments, for submitting assignments, schoolwork, and all assignments, resources, lessons, they're gonna be housed in that Exeter School Ag system for all students in K to twelve. That started on Monday, the sixth. That'll be the case every day through the end of the school year. And, um, for our students or parents of younger students where school ag is new, we have a link for where you can log in to school ag. And then at the bottom of this slide, um, the, and, and this was on the slide deck that was shared by Dr. Phillips as well with the, with the parent link message, there is a link to instructions. So you can click on that and it goes step by step. It walks you through how to log into school ag if you don't know how or if you just need some guidance. Are there any questions about attendance or accountability from any members of the curriculum committee before I talk about grading? Okay. Related to attendance and accountability, um, is the topic of grading. Uh, and again, to stick with a common theme that we have been focusing on, um, with our plan, trying to be flexible, trying to be very reasonable in how we handle grading. There are some school districts that are grading traditionally, starting in kindergarten all the way up. We didn't approach it that way. Um, at the K four level, we're focusing on complete assignments versus incomplete assignments. We're focusing on preparing students so they can advance to the next grade level. We're placing a strong emphasis on teacher feedback to advance student learning. And when the quarter four report card comes out for students in K to four, it's going to be a narrative-based report card. It's going to be a document where teachers will have an opportunity to go on and share some narrative for parents in terms of what they've observed regarding the, you know, the child's progress over the course of the fourth quarter. Right now, our three elementary principals are working on a document that can be used as a template for that and getting input from our teachers as we develop that. In grades five to eight, um, again, we're focusing on complete versus incomplete with still that strong emphasis on teacher feedback to advanced learning. But since we know when we get into grade levels five through eight, parents are often spend a little bit more time in Skyward and go in to check on progress and to see how things are going. And so we made some decisions to be a little bit more binary in terms of our grades, if you wanna call them that, at the grade five to eight level. So, you know, parents, when you go into Skyward, if your son or daughter has completed an assignment, you'll see the assignment there and you'll see a one beside it, which basically signifies that it's complete. And if there's a zero, it basically signifies that it's incomplete. And I will tell you that you're not gonna see many zeros because we're not going to allow that to happen. If we start to see even one or two, you're gonna see teachers reaching out saying, you know, is there something, you know, I can do to help? You know, might be want to try, try this again, you know, give this, you know, a shot, you know? So we want kids to be successful. The quarter four grade for students in grades five to eight will be pass fail. Okay? And there will not be any final exams. Um, grades five to eight are not credit bearing. Um, so having that percentage grade is not as critical. And when we think about setting our percentages for those areas, we've talked about a pass equalling a hundred percent. And, you know, we talk about, you know, we, we've had discussions about a fail being like a fifty-nine percent. So either way, it's not going to negatively impact a student's grade substantially overall, um, moving forward. So we're really kind of, you know, keeping it, trying to keep it very simple at that level. Um, and then grades nine to twelve, we're focusing a little bit more on measuring learning at a reduced quantity and rigor. There was that forty percent reduction that we discussed in completion of assignments. Strong emphasis on teacher feedback. Assignments will be, will be assessed with traditional grades in Skyward. This is the only grade level where we're doing it this way. Quarter four will be a percentage grade, but we will not be doing final exams. So when you think about like a report card over the course of four quarters in grades five through twelve, each quarter is gonna count twenty-five percent. There's not gonna be that final exam week. Any questions from anybody on the curriculum committee about grading? Okay. The next couple of slides talk about special populations. Dr. McLendon, this gets into some of the questions that I think you had. Um, in terms of our English as a second language learners, and we have over sixty of them in the district, uh, we have structured things so that there's the ability to translate documents through Google and school ag as well as you on our, on our website and Skyward Communication. We'll continue to offer supports. We'll continue to provide language acquisition. We have ESL teachers in the district. They'll continue to offer services. We'll provide modifications, instruction, translation supports as needed. In terms of our gifted learners, those that we want to accelerate, there will still be that consultation and support with our gifted teachers. There will still be enrichment opportunities embedded into lessons by the regular education teachers. And in addition, the gifted teacher will also offer opportunities. It'll be more than just additional content coverage. Continuing, when we look at students with individualized education plans or I E Ps, I just want to emphasize, and there's a lot of verbiage on this slide, so I'm not gonna read all of it, but that some of those unique populations, students that are receiving related services, speech and language, physical therapy, occupational therapy, our students in our low incidence programs, life skills, autistic support, multiple disability support, crossroads, as well as our emotional support and itinerant support. All of those students are going to continue to get services, both consultation, both, you know, I E P supports, instructional support. There's really good stuff happening thus far with Google meets that will continue. And then in terms of students with Title One services, um, instruction, um, of modified content for students that receive Title One, weekly opportunities to engage in core content. And we have our reading and intervention specialists working on communication and activities to engage families and to maintain continuity. So we have taken into consideration all of our special populations with this particular plan. In terms of technology support, um, just want to let folks know that please do not allow technology challenges at all to be a barrier. Uh, we have a lot of links on this page designed to help and support. The link to school ag, which has been referenced, there's a link to a frequently asked questions page. If you have questions about how to retrieve a username and a password for your son or daughter, especially at the K four level, or how to log into school ag, or how Google Meet is supposed to work, or where you can go for help, click on that frequently asked questions page and it will give you guidance there. Um, if you can't find your question answered on the, on the FAQ page, submit a tech help desk ticket, or if you prefer the traditional telephone, call the phone number that's here, you know, tap option six. We have people that are, that'll be answering phone calls. We'll be running limited drive-up technology support at times at the admin building if needed. I can tell you to date, we have issued, I think, over five hundred devices for families. And so please don't let technology to be a barrier. If it is one and you're having challenges, please make sure you reach out to our IT department. And I will just say again, and Dr. McLendon echoed it, they have been amazing and have done fantastic work supporting our families through this process. The last thing I will mention, and we're very, very appreciative of Service Electric Cable Vision in the Exeter community that is currently offering ninety days free internet service to students and teachers who do not already subscribe to Service Electric Cable Vision. So, you know, if you're at home and internet access is a challenge and you're currently not a Service Electric Cable Vision customer, I'd strongly encourage you to give them a call. Take advantage of this. Again, we don't want a lack of internet service to be a barrier to any of our families. And then I'll just conclude with some additional key information. I think folks are aware of this information thus far, but I just wanna mention it as well. All of our statewide assessments this year are canceled. No PSSAs, no PASA, no Keystone exams. There are no athletics, co-curricular clubs or activities that are meeting for the rest of the year. All of those, um, have been canceled, um, through the end of the school year. And if you have children that are taking advanced placement courses right now, AP exams are still being given. They're gonna be done remotely. Uh, the college board has set an assessment window. The window is May eleventh to May twenty-second. Students will be able to take tests at home. They're going to be modified. Most of the multiple choice components that were on them previously will not be part of those assessments. It'll be more the writing-heavy components. Our AP teachers at our high school are already working with students online to provide support. There are also resources on the AP central website. And if you click on that link, it will give you the current schedule in terms of between May eleventh and May twenty-second, when is the AP physics exam? When is the AP US history exam? So that, you know, as a parent, if your child is taking an AP course or AP courses, you know when those are. And then lastly, I'll just say that please continue to look at our website. Um, Joe Calamita from our IT department's been doing a fantastic job keeping that website up to date with information. As soon as Dr. Phillips gets new information and it's information that we're able to share, we're getting that information out to you as fast as we can because we want you to be informed. And so I would encourage you, if you have questions and you're not sure where to find an answer, the website should always be the first place to go because we try to get that information out there. So before I see if there are any questions that came in via our live stream, just want to ask if anybody on the curriculum committee has any questions, um, or, or thoughts before we get into any community questions that might be out there.
Okay, uh, I was trying to unmute. I, I just, I mean, this is, uh, thank you very much for the presentation. And as I started off saying about all the work that went into, that is going into this, now just seeing how comprehensive and thorough this whole, you know, how, how this whole program is thought out, I think this is excellent. So.
Well, and I will just say that, um, I, you know, this has been one hundred percent a team effort. You know, the reason that this plan is as comprehensive as what it is, is because we have amazing parents, amazing teachers, amazing administrators, support staff, board members on down the line. It's been a team effort to make this happen and that's why it's working so well. So, thank you. I, you know, I appreciate that. But the, the thanks really go to a multitude of people. It, it really, really does.
I just said, you make it look easy, but there's a lot involved to get all of that together like that in such short notice. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Mary Ann, were there any questions that came in via the live stream?
You're muted, Mary Ann?
Muted.
Oh, there you go.
Mary Ann, I unmuted you. Were there any questions that came in via the live stream? Any emails that you got with questions?
I don't have any emails.
Okay. Okay.
I have a question if we have a minute.
Sure.
How, how do we stack up against what the other seventeen districts are doing at this point?
Okay, wh- what I can tell you is, and again, I think, uh, Dr. Winter said it, uh, Mr. Campbell has said it. I've said it many, many times. The county has been very collaborative. We speak on a daily basis. We're sharing our information. We are all basically in the same position, uh, with the little variance here or there, a day or so short or long is when we got started. But we've all worked together to give each other information. And we are all in phase two, um, as it was directed by Pennsylvania Department of Education. So when, when you say, how do we stack up? Uh, we're all, um, doing the same things. Everyone had to post their plans on their websites. Everyone had to send their plans to, uh, Pennsylvania Department of Education. You will see changes or variations based on what the resources of the district, uh, entail. Some of our districts are one-to-one K to twelve. So when they came out of the box in phase one, they were moving already into virtual. Um, there are districts that don't have, uh, the ability to provide the resources like we did to the, uh, as Mr., excuse me, Dr. Winter said, over the five hundred devices that we passed out to our K to four parents. So they are still working on, um, like a, 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 what the terms that we're starting to use now is high-tech, low-tech and no-tech. Some of the districts don't have the ability to provide those K to four resources online like we're doing. Um, so again, it, it's all over the place minutely. Um, but I would say as a county, we're all pretty much, um, trying to do the same things for our students.
Yeah, I think what I would say to kind of add to that, you know, as well, I think where, where I have seen minor variances, district to district, it, it usually shows up in one of three places. Attendance, grading, or office hours. You know, that's where there tends to be minor variance, district to district to district. There, there are some districts that are being very rigid with what office hours look like. We didn't go down that path. We gave our families and our teachers a little bit more flexibility. Um, there, there are some districts that are grading with percentages and letter grades, starting in kindergarten all the way up. You know, we didn't do that. Um, you know, we decided to only worry about letter grade or, you know, really percentages at the high school level because it's the only level that's credit bearing. So that's where there are some minor variances. It tends to be in those areas typically is what I have seen.
Um, I will add though, that, um, just on the meeting that we had this morning, we're all in that ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent, uh, attendance and participation mark. So as, as a whole, I think the, the county is doing a pretty strong job and trying to educate our students.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the curriculum committee or anyone that's, you know, part of this Zoom call maybe that, um, has any other questions or comments as we wrap up?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say as well as everybody else, thank you for all the work that everybody's done. And I think it's, it's all fantastic. So thank you for all you've done to support our students.
Yeah, I'll did all the same thing. I, I think, uh, everybody's done a good job of stepping up to the plate and getting everything, uh, together. It's, uh, you know, I'm, I'm trying to get my son hit the initiative to get his butt up and get to work. So, so I, I just, I just sent him a picture of every little thing that was going on, saying that you need to do this and, you know, and get, get, get to work. Uh, so I really appreciate it. A lot of kids want to know what's going on and they're, you know, they're, they're, they're bored and they want to find some things to do. And I think they definitely gotta get, get on the school work. I think it's great. Appreciate it.
Well, if he's not doing the work, he'll be getting a phone call.
Good.
The one thing I will say by way of closure, and then we can allow folks that need to join the board meeting about ten to twelve minutes to be able to get on that call, is that if there's anybody watching via live stream, if there are questions that come up, um, after this meeting is over that you would like to have answers to, um, feel free to, to send an email to Mary Ann. Give me, or you can send an email directly to me, uh, P as in Patrick, T as in Thomas, winters@exetersd.org. And I'll be happy to get back to you and get you that information. Um, again, thank you so much, those of you that are watching and streaming live. We appreciate it greatly. And, um, this meeting tonight, uh, the recording of it will be posted on the website so that if there are folks that didn't get to watch it but would like to do so, they'll be able to. So, thank you all. Um, have a great evening and some of you I'll see very shortly at the board meeting.
And thank you. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.